I'd like to call the Monday, October 3, 2022 Oakwood City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Republicans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Hilton?
Here.
Mrs. Turbin?
Here.
And may I have a report on our minutes of our September 19, 2022 regular session and work session, Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the minutes from both of those meetings, and I found them to be correct and complete, and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. The next item on our agenda is status reports, and we have no status reports this evening, so that would move us to the next item, which is the visitor's section. And we do have one special visitor here tonight, and if you would like to come up and address council, state your name and address for the record. Everybody here knows who you are, but for the people watching at home, we look forward to hearing you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that so much. Madeline Isley, I live at 38 Beverly Place and am a very proud, almost 25-year resident of Oakwood now. Where does the time go? We measure it, of course, in the sizes of our children and what they're doing, right, Rob? It is my pleasure to be here today, though, as a, also a proud employee of Sinclair Community College. And really, to thank this community for the support it has given Sinclair. Oakwood in particular has always been, Oakwood voters, I should say specifically, have always been very, very supportive of education, as we know. It's one reason why most of us live here. And that has extended, in addition, to Sinclair as well. I'm here to share with you that there is a Sinclair issue on the ballot that will be on your general election ballot in November, or on October 12th, when you can start voting early. It is a straight renewal of a one-mil levy. It represents about $35 a year per $100,000 valuation, so it's a small issue, but it is vitally important to Sinclair to continue to offer low tuition, the lowest tuition, to Montgomery County residents. It helps to, to underwrite that, very important factor of education, and also to keep our highly job-focused programs up to date and ready to serve this community. I, I like to say it's, I, I would venture to guess there's not one dentist's office in this area that doesn't employ at least one Sinclair-educated dental hygienist. I know the dentists that we frequent, I think three out of the four are Sinclair-educated. So those are the kinds of, of high-demand, critical positions that Sinclair helps to fill. I shared with you at your places a little bit of information. On the back side is a little information about the renewal levy, but on the front side, which of course features a very handsome mayor, William D. Duncan, here, are just some facts and figures about the, the benefits that Oakwood residents in particular have realized because of the great community support for Sinclair. I'll just feature one fact, which is that just in the last year, 166 Oakwood high school students received college credit from Sinclair at a savings of over $1 million to those families, as compared to the average state tuition. And that's just one of many ways, of course, that Sinclair has brought benefits to this community. So again, thank you very much. Thank you to the voters of, of Oakwood. Thank you to the city of Oakwood for your support of education, and specifically for your support of Sinclair. Vote for Issue 10: Won't Raise Taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Madeline?
No.
All right. You still have your program where credits earned at Sinclair can transfer to, say, University of Dayton, Wright State, Miami?
Absolutely.
For them to ultimately, the people that want to get a four-year degree ultimately?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, that, the, the fact about the 166 Oakwood students, I have a personal story. Our youngest son, who just graduated from the University of Cincinnati with a degree in finance, took his business calculus course through Sinclair as a senior at Oakwood High School. Never had to take a, a, a calculus, a math class, basically, didn't have to take a math, math class at University of Cincinnati. So that saved him time, and of course, saved us money.
Wow, that's great. Well, thank you very much, and again, does not increase taxes, so.
Won't raise taxes. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. That's vital statistic.
You need to find a better picture of the mayor to put on your chart here. Yikes. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Madeline.
Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else that wishes to address council tonight? This would be on the visitor's section. If so, please come down to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and we would welcome you. That would be you. I haven't seen you for a while. How are you doing?
Why, and everybody looks a lot different than 2006. So, I ran for city council. So, I'm here tonight for a, well, I'm Nancy Bane. I'm, I live on Acorn Drive. I am here addressing, I'm an environmentalist, and I'm here for, on an environmental issue. And it's about the insecticidal spraying services, and I think they're problematic, and I'm compelled because of recent reports of studies done that the North American birds have declined by 50% since 1970, and globally insects are declining by about 30%. And I've lived in, on Acorn for about 24 years, and normally I get, I identify about 11 lepidoptera species over the summer, spring and summer. For the last two years, I'm down by less than half, and this has just been when the, this popular spraying service has started. And it's very concerning because this is, you know, this is our ecosystems that we're affecting. And I have, you know, I've extensively researched this, but I didn't know, three minutes, I'll have to compress it, but I think there are three things when, when we order these services, I don't think, there's three things at least that I don't think people really consider. First of all, these products are harmful to human health, and the, the problems there are, you know, at one time, we used to think that Roundup was so safe, you could drink it, and now they find that it is, it's directly linked to its carcinogenic. And, and they're saying the same thing about the permethrin's, that these permethrin's are very safe, but they're not, because they are, the things that they're looking at is synergy, what happens when you use insecticides, and there's a combination of them, and they're finding health effects with this. So, and what people don't, I think what people don't understand is when the USCPA approves a product, they only approve the active ingredient. They don't, they don't look at the whole formulation. So again, we're talking about synergy, and the, one test that they found that permethrin with DEET, so let's say the insecticide sprayer comes and he sprays with the permethrin, and then maybe you've sprayed DEET on your clothes, well, they're finding in rats that it causes an accelerated neuronal cell, cell death. And we're not rats, I know that, but what they're trying to study is how the synergy is working in our bodies. And pesticide, or permethrin's are considered safe because they are quickly flushed from the bo, body, but that makes them hard to study. And so if we're, when we walk around, we're breathing in chemicals, when we drink our water, chemicals, when we take, we take medications, and there's residues left on our food. For example, the USDA data show that even thoroughly washed apples can have 22 pesticide residues remaining on them. So what's happening to our health when we're eating and breathing and doing all these daily things? And then I have a, the other thing is persistence of these insecticides. DDT was studied in the 1990s, and it was, DDT was banned in 1972, but they still found traces of DDT in the air and soil. So this is another thing that people aren't really thinking about when they're using these chemicals. And, and dogs, for example, when they roll around the yard and in the, get into the bushes, studies have linked the use of lawn products with a significantly higher risk of canine malignant lymphoma, and the human beings are also experiencing higher rates of these things. The other concern, too, is the spraying machines. These emit particulate matter into the air, and so this is, affects respiratory afflictions and cardiovascular problems. And the other thing is that in 1962, Silent Spring was published, and the main message of that was that when you use these pesticides long-term on a regular basis and indiscriminately, what it does, it increases insecticide resistance. And the same thing is happening today. Currently, there are 500 species of insects and mites resistant to some form of pesticide, which includes mosquitoes, ticks, fleas, and bedbugs. In a webinar, the, with the Nature Conservancy, they, I learned that there were two species of ticks of human concern in Ohio. Today, there are seven species, and I have to tell you this gross story. It, it involves the female Asian longhorn tick that can lay eggs and reproduce without mating. On the webinar, a veterinarian with the Ohio State University tells an Ohio farmer who called about three dead cattle at 1,000 pounds each in his field, overwhelmed by these ticks that were so thick, the veterinarian could not insert an instrument to inspect the ear canal. Really disgusting.
Yeah.
And the other thing is that the entomologists refer to our most dangerous mosquitoes that we get dengue and malaria from, and yellow fever, they call them anthropophilic, which means they love people. They have evolved to multiply and thrive in connection with human activity. Thus, spraying these services are not making us safe, and they, we shouldn't be using them in this way because they are, we need effective pesticides. But the last point that I will talk to is the neighborhood, the neighbor relationships. I love nature. I love my yard. Have a woods in the back, and it's, my yard is ebullient, I guess you could say, very enthusiastic. And what I've noticed is that my neighbor does not like insects, all right? So, the problem is when they spray, there's the issue of drift and vaporization. And so my, my challenge is how do I protect my yard from this drift? Because I happened to measure it when he was spraying around, and it comes 10 feet into my yard. So if I wanted to develop a butterfly habitat, you know, that's going, these permethrin's, they kill all insects. So what I would like, what I would ask for the city council to consider, because I was heartened to see the city has recently enacted a sustainability code, although I didn't see anything that would be helpful for me in this matter. And I called the Ohio Department of Agriculture, and it is a legal issue. The technician does have to control for drift. But we live on top of each other, so if you have one inch and you've got 10 feet of drift, how can you control that? And so I, I would ask the city council to take this dilemma that I have seriously and provide some way of the community being able to talk about this, what I consider a very serious issue to our sustainability.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it very much. Does anyone else wish to address council at this time during our visitor's section? Seeing none? No? Okay. Seeing none, we will then close the visitor's section this evening. Thank you for, for coming, and we will now go on to the legislation portion of our meeting. And Vice Mayor Byington has an ordinance?
Yes, Your Honor. This is an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Oakwood so as to rezone Lot 1870 point from, let's see, oh, from R1 Residential Zoning District to the R3 Residential Zoning District. This is an ordinance to rezone a lot at 409 Rubicon Road. The property owner owns two adjacent lots, one of which is zoned in the R3 Zoning District, and the other one is zoned in the R1 Zoning District. The homeowner is in the process of consolidating, consolidating the two lots into a single lot, and has asked council to put a single zoning classification on the entire property. This particular request was already heard by our Planning Commission on September 7th of this year, and they have recommended approval by a four-to-zero vote, with one of the commission members being absent. So the motion this evening is for council, let's see, wait a minute. Council is required to conduct a public hearing on this matter. However, this is a first reading, so we will not vote until the second reading at our November meeting, but I think at this point, what we'll do is we'll have the public hearing, we'll take testimony, and then we'll have our deliberations and final vote in November.
All right. Thank you. This will begin our public hearing on this matter for the rezoning. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor or opposed to this rezoning matter? Do we need to swear them in if they wish to? So is there anyone here for the public hearing that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to the rezoning? Okay. Well, what, well, what we would need for you to do is come up to the podium so the people at home can hear you, and we would need you to be sworn in by our law director first. If you'll just raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in any testimony before council tonight?
Yes.
Thank you. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Sure. I'm James Christopher Cook. I live at 409 Rubicon, here in Oakwood, 45419. And, you know, the, the property that we're talking about is mine. Effectively, we have two adjacent lots, and we discovered in the planning process for another project that they're zoned completely differently. And we're not quite sure how that ever happened, you know, 100 years ago.
Welcome to Oakwood.
Yeah, we, you know, we don't, we can't find records on it, but we thought we'd go through the process to resolve the issue.
Okay.
It's really pretty straightforward, really.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for him?
I'll just say that this, as was mentioned in the reading, that this was reviewed thoroughly by the Planning Commission. We looked at the house, the addition, everything else. It just, it makes sense for this to be a singular lot and to have a singular designation of its own, so.
Okay.
Was the, not where the house is, but the other lot, an open lot before your addition? That prevalent?
Yeah.
Follow me. So you had a house lot, then an open lot?
Yeah.
Just moved on to the.
The existing driveway goes right up to that property line, but that lot technically is empty. It's free.
So it still is empty?
Yeah.
The garage is not even on the second lot yet?
No, because we, we need to consolidate this so that we could straddle that line.
Oh, I see. All right. And then, Rob, the difference between R1 and R3, can you give me that real quick, or is there a big difference?
They're both residential. In terms of the specifics and what are permitted uses in the two, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
All right.
I know that the R3 was selected because the, the lot that has the house, that it's, it comes closest to conforming with the setback requirements of the R3 district, so that's why it made sense to put it all under that same.
Does each R district has their own setback rules?
That's, that's the major difference between the different.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to verify, and I can get that from you before the November.
R1 tends to be some of the largest properties?
R1, you said?
R1, yes.
Okay. Great.
Any other questions for him?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Well, thank you for your testimony, and again, we will deliberate on this at our next meeting in November and vote on the issue at that time.
Thank you. Thanks.
Is there anyone left who wishes to oppose this hearing or this matter? You're welcome to come up. We're sort of running out. You're the only one left. I think you're on his side, right? Yeah. Okay. Very, very good.
Geez, I hope so.
Here's your big chance. Okay. But anyway, hearing no opposition to this matter, we will close our public hearing, and we will look forward to deliberating on this in our November meeting and voting yea or nay at that time.
Correct.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Okay. Then you also have another ordinance, I believe.
Yes. This is an ordinance to amend Section 1 of the 2022 Original Appropriation Ordinance Number 4947, and any existing supplemental thereto to provide for the appropriation of an additional amount of $120,000 to be expended from the Equipment Replacement Fund for the purchase of an ambulance. This is a supplemental appropriation ordinance to authorize the purchase of a used ambulance. The city currently has two ambulances. One of these is Medic 27, which is a 1996 model year ambulance that is scheduled for capital replacement in 2024. Over the last several months, Medic 27 has experienced a complete failure of its ABS brake module, and it cannot be repaired. Unfortunately, the part is no longer manufactured or commercially available, new or used. Medic 27 can no longer be used for emergency medical services. The city manager has recommended the purchase of a used ambulance. Safety Director has located one that is in excellent shape for about one-third of the cost of a new ambulance. It has enough remaining useful life to serve as a primary ambulance through 2024, and then to serve as a backup ambulance when we purchase the new one at that time. The supplemental appropriation will authorize an additional amount of $120,000 to be expended for the Equipment Replacement Fund for the purchase of this ambulance. And I move that council waive the second reading and adopt this ordinance this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any questions or comments for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes this legislation section of our meeting tonight. We do have a staff report from our Director of Finance, Cindy Stafford, CPA. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm going to talk a little bit this evening about our 2021 year-end audit. Last time I was here, it was May, and we were just about wrapping it up. I'm going to talk a little bit about the 2021 Auditor of State STARS program. They kind of go hand in hand, and then just finish up with an update on where we are through three-quarters of 2022. So our 2021 audit starts really with me right after the first of the year, kind of works through that process. The auditors come out for preliminary in February for about a week, a few days a week at most, and then they come back usually April sometime to finish up their testing. And then I work towards getting the report done. I submit the report to them, and they go through their process. And once they're done with it, they then submit that report to the auditor's office, or actually, I submit it, but they put their opinion with it. When they attach their opinion, it's considered a draft until the auditor of state concurs. Their opinion was a clean audit, which means it was unqualified, and they had no management comments. The auditor of state concurred with that, so we again ended up with an Auditor of State award, which is the certificate that you see on the screen. To receive this award, I want to talk a little bit about what we go through, because every year when I start the audit, I always remind my fellow department heads, yes, it is a financial audit, but it's not just a financial audit, that when the auditors come out, they do more than just review the numbers and the things that we do in the finance department. So to receive this audit, we have to have a clean, unqualified audit, which we did have, but we also have to meet some other criteria. One is the GAAP report that I do, that has to be submitted to the auditor's office by May 31st without an extension. In addition, the auditor's opinion that goes in there can't have anything that talks about findings for recovery, any type of material citations, any material weaknesses, any significant deficiencies, any single audit findings, and any question costs. If we had had a management comment letter, which we didn't, the audit letter cannot, or the comment letter cannot contain anything that talks about ethics referrals, bank reconciliation issues, findings for recoveries for things less than $500, and public meeting and public records issues. And finally, there's one last sentence when they go through this whole, looking at these in order to award these auditor of states, and that last sentence says, "We have no other financial or other concerns." And so those other concerns, what they're looking at is, they're looking at our charter, they're looking at our ordinances, they look at our policies and procedures, they look at the Ohio Revised Code, the, the state laws, any federal laws for any federal grant programs that we might have received. And finally, the auditor of state puts out on a regular basis their best practices, and their best practices cover a range of things, not just financial, but operational as well. So really, in the end, that audit is really kind of a financial and operational look at our city and how we ended up for that year. So I want to thank my staff for all that they do on a daily basis, because if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't achieve that highest financial standard. But receiving this award also shows that the city is governed and managed well, and that starts from the top down. It starts with council's expectations for all of staff and everything that staff does on a daily basis. So I just want to say, as part of that audit, continuing on with when I say that it's more than just a financial audit, one of the things that, back in 2019, the auditor of state decided to add to the audit was this STARS rating system, and it monitors the transparency that government has. And what it's looking at is it wants to ensure that we're all following the Sunshine Laws. Those are two really acts that kind of come into play with that Sunshine Law. It's the Ohio Public Records Act, as well as the Open Meetings Act. When it comes to the Records Act, what they're looking for is that our records are available for inspection or copying, and the time requested for those inspections and that copying are on a, on a prompt basis, if it's an inspection, or reasonable basis if someone wants copies. The open meetings, those are required that the minutes in the meetings are posted someplace so that they can be seen by the public and inspected by the public. So as part of this, the state auditors, when the auditors are here, the state auditor has set up seven best practices, and in order to achieve those, you have to have implemented at least five of those seven in order to get four stars. So if you go out to the state auditor's website, and that's at the bottom of my slide, and you Google "city of Oakwood," what you get are the following six entries. So the city of Oakwood and the city of Oakwood Health Department. The state of Ohio considers the city of Oakwood Health Department a legal public entity in and of itself, so it is audited in the same manner that the city of Oakwood is, is audited. So if you look for all of the years out there, for all three years for the city of Oakwood... So if you look for all of the years out there, for all three years for the City of Oakwood and all three years for the Health Department, we received four stars, so that being the highest achievement in transparency. If you actually click on the three stars, it takes you to the list of the seven practices that they would like to see in place. Now, back in 2020, so right after the first year in 2019 that they did this, we realized that number three was not checked. We have been doing that since 2020. We now acknowledge all public records, meaning if someone emails us, as part of our response back, we acknowledge that they requested this information. If we can't supply it immediately, then we send an acknowledgement. I need to talk with the auditor's office and find out why that hasn't been corrected, and I'll talk with our auditors to see if they missed letting the state auditors know. But we have met all seven of those requirements at this point in time. If you look at that last one, the online presence, one of the things I want to remind everybody is that if they go out to our city's website, the www.okewoodohio.gov, there is a lot of information out there. The information I'm showing here is under the Finance tab. You'll find our, our financial audits. You'll find the city budgets, the monthly financial statements that I give to council, along with on the Income Tax tab, a link to make payments, tax forms, utility billing, all types of information out there as well on leaks, how to deal with leaks if you have a leak, if you're in the spring thinking about filling your swimming pool, backflow certification, all of that information is out there. It's just a plethora of resources that are available out there, as well as our meetings are out there, links to seeing our meetings, the minutes, and I want to give kudos to Lori Stasiel, who's sitting back over there, who's the Clerk of Council, because I credit this website and a big part of our transparency to the information that she includes out there on the website. So I'm very thankful for all the work she does. Oops. Skip through all that. Sorry about that. So before I move on, I want to see if there's any questions about the audit, the STARS rating, the online, any of that information?
Do we receive the maximum stars possible?
We did.
Okay, and we got your auditor of state award, and it's not the first time that's happened. How many years has that happened?
At least the last, I think, five or six years now.
In a row.
Yes.
Congratulations to you and your staff.
Congratulations.
Very much, very much appreciated by council.
Yeah.
I do have a question, Cindy. Do you know how many public records requests we get? I mean, roughly, or do, is it comparable year to year, or?
It is comparable year to year. We actually keep a log, because that's one of the requirements. That's one of the first requirements on there. So we actually have a log. I've never actually sat and counted all the lines on that log, but it's pretty comparable, and it's the same, a lot of the same information gets requested from year to year.
Okay. I thought you were going to say it's the same people.
Well, that it is. It's the same folks.
And I have to say, you and Lori, the online resources are fantastic. I mean, I hear that from a lot of people, so.
Good work. All right. We'll move on then to where we are through the budget at this point in time. So we're three quarters of the way through 2022. I can't believe it already. Pretty soon, we'll be talking about snow and New Year's and all the rest of that, so. If we look at our receipts, we're at 90% of budget already. There's really two main reasons for that. Our two largest sources of revenue in general city services are our income taxes and our real estate payments. So our income taxes at this point in time are 88% of our $10 million budget that we have, that we set. Despite all the economic pressures out there, our resident salaries have held steady and increased compared to 2021. We're thankful for that. We've got an increased number of residents who are still working from home, so we have quite a few remote workers. So we're seeing more of those withholdings coming to us rather than going to the city where they're currently working, because they're working at home. And then finally, we see the results of the residents, the new residents and the businesses down at Point Oakwood, that development. So we're kind of seeing all of those come into play as to what's, I believe, really in keeping our, our income taxes steady and continuing to increase. And finally, our real estate taxes at this point in time are 99% of budget. Part of that is a timing of our real estate taxes. We receive the bulk of those taxes in April and September as a result of when we pay. In February and July, the council, or county submits those payments to us. The county also anticipates a 95% collection rate across the board in Montgomery County, but usually in Oakwood, we see a 98 to 99% collection rate. So those being our two largest sources, that is the biggest reason why we're sitting right now at almost 90% of our budget. If we look at dispersments and encumbrances right now, we're just slightly above what we would expect budget to be. The current inflation rate is 8.3%, and the city, just like all the rest of us personally, are seeing increased prices across the board on everything. So I anticipate really no surprises, but I do anticipate dispersments and encumbrances being really close to, if not at, budget by end of the year when it comes to our general city services. And really no surprises with anything going on with general city services.
Real quick, Cindy, do you have any idea, and I won't hold you to the number, but what's the percentage, or you could go dollar amount on, let's compare maybe 2019 to now, about people working from home? How much more income that's brought in? Do you have any idea?
You know, I had a sheet of paper at the Budget Review Committee, and I want to say, I want to say we're up to two. See if Norb can remember. I left that up there. I want to say the withholding numbers, for the number withholding went from in the 150s, 160s, now to almost, I think it's close to like 230, 240 of the number that are withholding because they're remote workers still.
That's people.
That's, yes. So that's, could be a person or a group of people depending upon the company.
So 70, 80, there's no, you know, there's no dollar figure that we put here?
No, there's no dollar figure associated with that.
Just based on number of people that, that's the only number that you could really fine tune and figure out?
Yes.
You mean employers. Great. More employers are withholding taxes and remitting them direct to Oakwood than were in 2019.
Correct.
Meaning that they, these people are working in Oakwood, and the employers is required to withhold from their wages and remit them to us directly.
Correct.
Whereas if they were all working downtown in Dayton, they wouldn't even be admitting anything to Oakwood. There's nothing to remit.
Right. We wouldn't potentially see anything until they file their tax return for the, the quarter of a percent that comes to the City of Oakwoods, so yes.
Thank you.
The refuse slide, again, both the refuse and the, the next slide I have, which is the Enterprise Funds, really close to budget, kind of same thing with the 80% number for dispersments and encumbrances. Really no surprises here, or as I flip to the Enterprise Fund, that I've combined water, sanitary, and stormwater. Everything's really close to where we anticipate budget to be, and I really don't expect any surprises. Any other questions about where we are? End of the year?
All right. It appears to be a good report.
It is.
It's a good report. The fewer the slides, the better the news, correct?
And that is correct.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your comments, and again, thank you for all your staff for their great service to the citizens of Oakwood. We appreciate it very much. That concludes our staff report this evening. We do have an Oakwood moment tonight, and Councilmember Turbin wishes to present that.
Thank you, Mayor. I do. I have a, I have a great story to share with you. You've all heard of Pay It Forward, when somebody does a favor for you, and then you do a favor for somebody else, and it, and it just pays it forward. Well, I have an example, a great example of that right here in Oakwood. As you know, Oakwood has the Jill's List. Where a lot of people can put things for sale on it, and occasionally, you'll see free things, you know? Just pick them up. It'll be on my porch. Well, on this particular day, Kami Metter, who is an Oakwood resident and a fitness instructor by day, whose hobby and passion is gardening, she put out on the Jill's List, "I have free cut flowers for anyone who will enjoy them." Well, it happens that that particular day, some bad weather was coming in, and she knew it was going to destroy her blooms, and so she just thought, you know, let me put it out there, and hopefully, somebody can enjoy these flowers. Well, it just so happens that Carol Judge saw her Jill posting and decided to take her up on her offer. Now, Carol knew that Tom and Healy Jackson's 40th anniversary was coming up, and so she put some blooms together into a nice bouquet, and she gave them to Tom and Healy for their anniversary. You know, it's just, it's a great story, and when I told Kami, she practically teared up, because it's just, you know, it's so rewarding to know that people enjoy things that you're passionate about. And so many thanks to Kami Metter for sharing her beautiful flowers, for Carol Judge for remembering Healy and Tom's anniversary, and lastly, for Healy for sharing this story with all of us.
Very good. Thank you. That is a neat story. It's now time for our City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a few things today. Last Friday, as you know, we had the joy and privilege of greeting, I don't know how many there were, maybe 100, Harmon third graders. It's an annual, call it pilgrimage here. They spend the morning down at Public Works and learn a lot about what we do down there. They have lunch at Schaefer Park, and then they end up here for a couple hours talking to the Safety Department, the mayor, and this year, I was involved in it again. And I devoted my 20 to 25 minutes with each of the four groups. By the way, it's, it's very exhausting, and I really gain respect for what teachers do every day. But the kids were wonderful, and the personality is amazing, but I spent my time with them. First, of course, telling them about the council manager form of government, and then I went immediately to the department heads, and I talked about what it takes to kind of do what I do here. And I was bragging about all of our fine department heads, so, and for good reason. So thank you, Cindy, for all you do, and about half the group could guess, you know, your title, but the other half couldn't. You know, I said, the person that handles the tax money coming in, the spending going out. But anyway, it was a great event. A few project updates. The Gardner Pool Project, which we've spoken about here a couple times, is now well underway. We opened up the former brick wall, or portion of the brick wall off Patterson, so the contractor can have access to the deck. And this week, I believe, they'll be removing pretty much all the old decking, and then putting new drainage in, and ultimately, putting a new deck in. Not sure if that'll be done yet, this, before, you know, there's no flies or next spring, but that'll get done, and then the new diving stands and lifeguard stands. So the pool will be in great shape when it opens next Memorial Day weekend. RA Miller is doing a nice job on our sidewalk curb and driveway apron project, kind of the northwest part of Oakwood is where they're working right now. We had a great document shred event, and Jennifer, I think we had about 200, is that correct? About 200 individual cars drive through the Public Works yard a couple Saturdays ago, and appreciated being able to dispose of documents, so thank you for organizing that. Our leaf season begins, believe it or not, next Monday, October 10th, and it goes until, for the 10-week period, until December 16th. Usually, we extend it a couple weeks after that, based on the conditions and all. But again, just a reminder, during that leaf season, you know, ideally, just a day or two before your pickup, put the leaves out by the street, in, in the gutters, fine. That makes it easier for us to push them into a pile and pick them up. But just leaves, no other debris during that 10-week period. As you know, we're working on the 2023 budget. We had a good meeting with the Budget Review Committee a few weeks ago. It was the first of our three meetings, and we have another one set for October 18th. And at that meeting, we'll get into some of the detailed numbers with the committee that's comprised of 32 Oakwood residents. And finally, and Carol Collins gave me this, and I, one of you were probably going to mention this, but the Family Fall Festival in Scarecrow Row is coming up, and was somebody going to speak about that?
I was going to mention it if nobody else did, but.
Well, here, I'll, me too, okay. So it's Sunday, October 9th, 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Schaefer Park. Old-fashioned games, food, and entertainment for the whole family, pumpkin painting, a costume parade around the park, family pictures, and lots of games. So it'll, again, it opens at 2:00 p.m. The high school, Oakwood High School Band will play at about 2:15, and then from 2:00 to 5:00, the games and activities will take place. About 2:30 is the costume parade. That's for kids 10 and under, and there'll be a little judging going on for the best costumes. And then the Witches Walk will take place at 3:00 p.m. That's always a hit. And then at 4:45 p.m., the winners of the Scarecrow Row contest will be announced by the mayor. So if you want to build a scarecrow, the OCC has application forms to fill out, and the deadline for that is this Thursday, the 6th. And the building of scarecrows takes place that same Sunday from 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. And they are also, as I mentioned earlier, they'll be judged and winners awarded. So hopefully, the weather will be nice, and it'll be a great event. That's all I have.
All right. Any questions for our City Manager?
Norb, did you say, when you were talking about leaves and putting them in the street, did you say in the gutter?
Yes, in the gutter line.
Oh, the gutter line, okay.
Right. And, and, you know, if, for folks that have a whole bunch of leaves, we ask them to, to, you know, stretch it out.
Okay.
You know, to linear kind of pile, as opposed to a big mountain that protrudes out into the street.
Oh, got it. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Anything else for our City Manager? All right. Thank you. We will now go to Council Comments. Councilmember Turbin?
No comments.
Councilmember Hilton?
No comments, Your Honor?
Councilmember Stevens?
No comments.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Byington, excuse me?
I'll just make one comment, and I always do this the month before the election. You're going to see a lot of television commercials, a bunch of radio ads, all the other stuff. I just ask that you take some time and don't count on the media to make your decision. Do some homework, figure out what the issues are that you're passionate about, things that are important to you, and find those things out so that a month from now, when we have our elections, we can do it on an informed basis.
Thank you. I also want to report that, you know, as the third graders are exhausting. And I started my little speech with each one of them. I asked them, did they brush their teeth this morning? And they all said, most of them said yes. There were a couple no's, but most of them said yes. And I said, well, where did the water come from? And they would all say, the faucet. And I says, no, it came from the city. And how do you think we pay for that water to go to the pipes into your house? And they've got it down now. They all hounded out taxes. So we got to explain income taxes and property taxes, and how this council has a budget, and we tell Norb what he can spend, and not one penny more, and he does a very good job doing that. So our next meeting is November 7th, which is the day before the election, and we are now adjourned.